Good evening, folks. It's 7:00 PM, so we're, I'm calling the meeting to order for our regular board meeting. And I'd just like to acknowledge that we do have a quorum, even though, looking at the table, you might not think so, but if you look on screen, you'll see that we have two board members with us, Mary and Mark, and Ilda is on vacation, and Brendan, about a half an hour ago, got called into work on an emergency. So he may join us later on this evening if things get resolved. Otherwise, we have plenty of people to have our meeting, and it's a light agenda tonight, as befits a midsummer meeting. So first item on the agenda is pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve the July 23 meeting minutes.
That's moved.
Motion made by Katina, seconded by Mark. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hands. And I see Mary and Mark's hands. Thank you. Is there anybody who would like to speak during public comment? Please just unmute yourself and let me know, or I don't see anybody here in the auditorium. Okay. Board chairs' report. Well, I just want to acknowledge that we had a very productive board retreat last Saturday with Dr. Gamaro. Dr. Gamaro's going through all the groups and doing retreats, which we'll hear more about later. But it was a very productive day, and the board is looking forward to continuing our roll-up-the-sleeve-longer-session works again when we have our retreat in October. But I'm sure that there will be plenty of things that come out of that retreat last week that we'll be addressing at our board meetings over the coming year, and maybe have some more in-depth working sessions on. And I guess that's all I want to have for board chairs' report. And I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Gamaro for the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. If you can go on to the next slide. We want to just acknowledge the facilities, IT, and the food service departments, because they have worked really hard over the summer to ensure that all of our schools are ready, and we're really ready in the next couple of weeks to open school. Also, as you mentioned, I have been engaging with my cabinet in really planning everything that has to do with the opening of the school year. But we really took the time to come together and really set the stage and set our foundation on what are our common goals? What is our vision for the work that we're going to be engaging in for the rest of the school year? And so we engage in a retreat. That same, the same happened with the Board of Education, because it's critical that leadership is all on the same page as to how it is that we're going to be moving forward. And today and tomorrow, we, today we started with our leadership team, which included the principals, assistant principals, and department leaders, again, to set the stage, set the tone, so that we're all on board, on the same page, as to how it is that we're going to be moving forward. And so far, we have gotten a lot of positive feedback about the experience, both at the cabinet level, at the board level, and with our leaders. And we're looking forward to really continuing to work with them to ensure that we create the conditions for all of our students to be successful. We continue to plan for the beginning of the school year. Next week, we're having new staff orientation. We have the community expo that is taking place on August 23rd. We're also planning for convocation and our school staff meetings. And then those three days, August 25th, 26th, 27th, are days when our staff are going to be back, and they're engaging in professional learning, as well as getting their classrooms ready to receive our students. And our first day of school is August 28th. So we're really on track to receive our students and to have a very productive and positive school year.
Thank you. Is there anybody on the board who has any questions or comments on what's happening to get ready to open the schools? No? Okay. Well, we look forward to the convocation. I know that's a big thing that many board members attend. And also, a number of us are planning on being at the community expo on August 23rd. So that should be, that's one way that the board's staying involved in the process. Thank you for all your work, Dr. Gamaro.
You're very welcome. That is what I'm here for. If you can go on, if you can go on to the next slide. We want to take this opportunity to really congratulate Natchog School for receiving America's Healthiest School Award. And we have today the principal, Inamite, who is joining us. And I would like for her to join, to come to the podium and explain to us how they were selected for this award, and give us any information that you want to share with us. But congratulations, first of all.
I see Michelle is with you also.
Good evening, Dr. Gamaro and board members. Thank you so much for inviting me up to talk about this exciting award that we've received. So first of all, the, the award is the America's Healthiest Schools Award for 2025. They give out across the nation, a little over 1,000 awards won out to different schools across the nation. But the exciting, the really exciting news for us is that we're the only school in Connecticut that was recognized. So, you know, first of all, I'd like to publicly thank Michelle Dupuy, our academic coach at Natchog, who is vital in all of the amazing things that happen at Natchog School, put tireless hours with me into doing the application for this award. They actually contacted me after seeing our Connecticut Association of Schools School of the Year Award. They had read about us and said, you know, you really have a lot of the things going on that might apply to our award. Would you like to, you know, look into it? So we did. We read it, and we said, okay, this looks like something that, you know, we could definitely apply for. They, when they talk about healthy schools, they look at nine different categories. They look at the health office. They look at the physical education curriculum, different areas. And the two that we applied specifically for were social-emotional learning and family and community engagement. And so those were the two areas that we were recognized in. Exciting for us, because that is really the heart of, at the heart of what we do. Those two areas are really important and meaningful to us. You know, over the last two years, we have earned several different awards, which are really exciting, and they're, they're special in different ways. This one is special to us, because it's nationally recognized, and it really notices the things that we're doing with those two really important areas, family engagement and social-emotional learning. We recognize the importance of those two things to support the whole student when we, we look to support our, you know, our students at school. So really exciting for us. And, you know, the, you never know what's coming next. But we're really excited about this award. We're excited to tell our staff about it. And we can't do this work without the support from our community. So thank you for your continued support. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Michelle Dupuy, you want to stand up and take a bow? That, you know, you deserve a lot of credit, as well as the rest of the, it's a team effort. And just know that the Board of Ed is very proud of all the successes at Natchog School. And we hope that your learning and what, how you've become, what you've become as a school is something that we concede throughout the rest of the district and throughout schools all over the place for children who deserve the best. Thank you very much for all your hard work, on behalf of the board. Anybody else want to say anything? Katina?
Yes, congratulations. You know, those are areas that personally excite me. And as we have these goals in our agenda for the next year of family engagement and socio-emotional support to students, I would actually would likely love to learn about what Natchog has done, and, and also how is it going to be shared with other schools? That's my request.
Thank you. Might be worth a, a, a longer session at one of our, our meetings. Thank you for that suggestion. Anybody else?
I would just like to say that what else can you possibly get? It, it's just been amazing. And, and Natchog, for many years, has always been the one school that has really made a point of community engagement, including families. And it's, it's just always been a very special place. Thank you.
Well, thank you. It's really great making us smile. And people can't see Michelle, but she was grinning ear to ear while all this was happening, which is worth everything to see somebody who works in our district so happy and fulfilled. So, thank you. So now we're on to committee reports. Ad hoc elementary school consolidation. Mark, I'm going to hand it over to you.
Thank you. We met on August 5th. We, excuse me, got Dr. Gamaro to report the status of the invasion flyers that have been uploaded to our school website. The information on consolidation has also been added to the website, including the question-and-answer section. And the flyers have been, are already, has started being shared to the, to the public with the various events that she has entertained this, this summer already. There was suggestion by Lynn that we have a breakdown of the proposed school cost to explain how the, how the state reimbursement will actually reduce significantly the cost of the local taxpayer, so they're not confused by the $114 million number. They'll also see the 80% reimbursement from the state. We also wanted to do a review of the cost of keeping the elementary buildings, the three elementary buildings, open versus the costs, cost and advantages of the, that the new facility will give us, so that people can see the, the savings in money, as well as the improvements in education programming. We then had a general discussion on public forums and when to hold them, that we didn't do anything specific, other than you referred to the list that Dr. Gamaro shared with us earlier about the activities. And then finally, Lynn explained that in order to have a workable referendum question approved by the town council, we need to get it to town council by August 9th, their August 19th meeting. So we are working on different proposals for how that question will take place. And that's what we did.
So just to remind folks that the town council in June set the referendum date for the elementary school consolidation of November 4th, which is also the date of the municipal elections. And under, under all the election rules, the question that appears on the ballot needs to be approved by the town council. So that's what Mark's talking about. And they're going to be taking that question up. We're, we're giving them the question. They'll be taking it up next week at their meeting. And then it has to go to the Secretary of the State's office for approval. So we have to jump through a bunch of hoops by a date certain in September in order to have the ballot question. And we also, a subgroup of, of the committee is meeting tomorrow to discuss the proposal for how we get out into the community now that we're getting toward the end of the summer and getting back into the fall. We came up with an entire list of ideas for forums and outreach to voters and families and schools. And you'll be hearing more about that once we have the plan in place. But I do urge people, as Mark said, to check out the website, because there is updated information on the website. Any questions or comments? Okay. So now we're on to policy. Plugging through all the policies, and Katina has a report for us.
Good evening, everybody. As, as you know, we have been repealing, reviewing, replacing policies, I think, for the last couple of years. Do I understand we're about 90 or 93% down now? Yes, as I look at Mr. Weathers. And we met this Monday afternoon at 5:30. We have some, about eight policies that we're going to recommend for repeal in the next board meeting. The purpose of that, this particular past meeting, was to review what we need to do with policies on the series of 500 and 600. In addition, we talked about, Dr. Galucci recommended that we review a policy on gifts to school units and districts. That was outdated 20 years ago. So we're for sure going to review that next, next time. So we have recommendations for repeal, quite a few policies on the 600 series that we are replacing with the model policies that our legal team has suggested. In addition to all that, in future meetings, we are going to be reviewing and looking at model policies. But these are policies that, in the 600 and 500 series, that the staff, the administration, will have to look, evaluate, and decide upon what recommendations you have. Because some of them are not mandatory as per statutes anymore. But they might, the, the staff might recommend legal review and the decision to maintain those policies, but update it. So it has been quite a joy to have the Neil, Mr. Weathers, and the staff do all of this and become a more modern, updated, you know, up-to-date legally, school system with our policies. We will meet on September 8th, I think is our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Katina. Are there any questions or comments? Anybody has about any of that? It is a lot of work. And since I've joined the policy committee, which has just been this past year, I've learned a lot. So thank you for all your work. School planning and design. Brendan is not here. Is there anybody who could give a little report on what was discussed on Monday night? If not, we can, we can punt until the next. Neil could? Yeah, if you don't mind. Yeah, Brendan, I'm sure Brendan would have handed off a report to somebody if he had more than 20 minutes warning that he wasn't going to be here, so.
It's, it's basically a pretty brief report. We just went through facilities update with Mr. Sly Pereira. And basically, he just gave us an update on the getting schools ready. He, he felt we're doing a great job there. He just talked about that, and then gave an update on capital improvement projects, and just mentioned, and I can't believe I'm saying this once again, but the North Wyndham sewage pump, that particular project, I love that, that there is a little bit of a delay with the permits, although the project's trying to move forward. And we don't think, we think the pump pit will be in service before it's, like, it'll last long enough to get replaced. But we're going through some issues with the permits. Not, when we say issues, not on our end, just getting them through. That is pretty much the summary of the meeting.
Permits by the town, from the town?
Yeah, I think they're being resolved now, but just, that's a little bit of a hiccup.
If there is a problem, please let the board know, because we certainly don't want to be opening school and having a big problem on our hands.
We understand, and we feel okay with our proceeding.
Mr. Harris is here too. I think that's an accurate summary, correct?
Please come to the mic, thanks.
With the issue at North Wyndham, working with Ocu Pump, they've checked it. And due to time limits, most likely that project will take place at holiday break, because there's not enough time to do the work before the start of school. But it's, it's not an emergency. We need to work on it. So based on their information, and it's really held up with the Department of Health, waiting for State Department of Health paperwork, checking on those permits. That's, that's where the holdup is.
The state, that's a little different. Mark has his hand up, so could you please stay here in case you can answer his question?
Mark? Well, I was reinforcing what you said. That was my point at the committee meeting, Lynn, that, that if there was a holdup at the health, that the staff needs to reach out to the board so that we could put pressure on Town Hall, if not pressure at least, make it, you know, if the contractor was running into some delays with the health department. Certainly, we're elected officials, and we can, working through the Town Hall, or Dr. Gamaro can call the town manager and say, this is important. We need to get it done. I, I just, I like the point that the staff needs to know they can use us as a resource. We shouldn't be scared to, to ask for some priorities, especially where this has been such an ongoing problem. So I'm reinforcing your viewpoint, that they should definitely have reached out to, to the board to help grease the wheels.
Not only can be used, but actually should be used when it's a health issue like this. But I, Mark, I think I heard Mr. Harris confirm that it's a state health department issue, but in which case, we have state legislators. And don't forget, they get faster responses from the legislative liaisons for those departments than some of us do, so.
Right.
Absolutely. So we'll continue to look into it. I'll work with Sly, and we'll progress accordingly.
I think we might like a report on where we are with that sooner than waiting until next month. So maybe at our next meeting, the board could get a report on how this is progressing. Because it's of utmost importance. Thanks.
I wanted to add that I reminded the staff, or, or the committee, that it's the North Central Department of Health, which is part of the State Department of Health, and that the Satellite Office is right at the, at the Town Hall. And so we can walk in, in, and just start complaining. Of good news to the, to the community is that the 5th grade wing is totally ready to go, so that parents can breathe and students can be happy that their classrooms are all set. Thank you to the team for doing that.
That's at the middle school, just to be clear.
At the middle school.
Yeah, because people remember, all the 5th graders are going to be in the middle school next year. Thanks. Thank you. Thank you, Albie and Neil, also, for helping out. Any other thing on school planning and design? Okay. A recurring theme has been the budget. And we just want to do some quick updates on where things are with the budget and the referendum process and the public hearing process. Dr. Gamaro, are you going to take that?
Yes, I just have a brief update on federal grants. We were waiting, we were actually monitoring the release of some federal funds that had been held towards the end of the '25 fiscal year. And they have been released. So that, that is not additional funding. Those are fundings, the funding that we already had encumbered, and we were just waiting to receive that money. We're still monitoring the availability for the new fiscal year federal grants, which is for the 20, it should say, '26, '28 school years. And that would include Title I, Part C, Title II, Title III, and IV, and Part A, and adult basic education. And that is a larger amount, which is for $743,000. And that we're still waiting on. We're not, we are continuing to monitor it and see if those are released for the next fiscal year. So still at stake, because the $226,000, those were already encumbered. We, there's still at stake some of the student programming. And that includes, of course, that we have shared with the community, the middle school sports, the high school clubs, and the field trips. So we will continue to work towards closing our budget and posting, not a sub-budget as we have right now, and then going back to referendum in the dates. I just want to make sure that we don't share inaccurate data with the community.
The referendum was confirmed for me last week as being, definitely being on September 30th. And so we'll have to let families know. And we can't tell people how to vote, but we can certainly share the word when we have back-to-school events and things of that sort, that this is their opportunity to go vote on the school budget. And we talked about having information, you know, that people could go to the state, Secretary of the State's site, and figure out whether they're registered and where they vote, if they have any questions. Also, the Chair of the Board of Finance said that the public hearing on the budget is going to be on the 26th of August, which is an unusual night for them. They usually meet on Wednesday nights, but they set the hearing on, to, for the 26th so that it wouldn't be the same night as our board meeting, which is on the 27th. And that will be at Town Hall. And we need to figure out how the Board of Ed wants to present at the, at the upcoming public hearing, and sort of all be on the same page on what, what we want to stress for our, our key messages, other than give us money. So we'll probably want to share some updated information with the Board of Finance members, too, because we did give them a flyer with all this, but the federal stuff was uncertain at that time. Any?
Yes, we will, we will work on an updated flyer that has more current information.
Let's open it up. Does anybody have any things they want to discuss around the budget? I know we keep talking about this, but just want to make sure we're hearing people's ideas and thoughts on this. If there's anything new you want to say. Okay. I don't see anybody wanting to say anything. So this is going to be a short meeting today. Onto, oh, also, I just want to stress, members of the public can go to the hearing and speak. I know that the staff did a great job at the public hearing in the spring. I don't think we need to repeat that. But we may need to want, we may want to think about sharpening a few points that get delivered not just by board members and/or the superintendent, but by families and other people in the community. So if anybody has any brilliant ideas on that, please feel free to reach out to me and/or that, through Dr. Gamaro, and we'll gather all that together before the hearing. Katina, you look like you want to say something?
Yes. First, I would like to ask at what time will the meeting be, so that everybody knows?
I can't remember whether it's 6:00 or 7:00, Katina. I will, we'll let folks know.
Yes, and maybe, my idea is to demonstrate how many middle school students would be affected if we stopped sports, high school clubs, how many students, and field trips, what the children won't learn. Instead, you know, just to humanize it and personalize it. it to the minimum denominator, including our family members if necessary.
Anybody else? Onto budget transfers. Should I hand it over to you, Mark, on this point? Or is Neil, Neil's coming up, Neil Weathers?
These are, these are in between committee meetings, so I haven't reviewed them yet either, so let's have Neil do his magic.
So, yeah, so this is being requested due to just a change. It's basically moving from one account to another. We had a reduction in a position and so in reducing that, we're transferring the money into a different salary line that will actually, Natchog principals here knows about. We have a new kindergarten being opened due to enrollment increase and a para position, so it's just moving that money accordingly so that we can, it's just, it's all staffing, but it's to account for the change in the specific accounts.
So it's $141,726? That's what's in the packet?
Correct. That is, yes, that is the correct amount. Thank you.
I would entertain a motion on that and then we can ask questions if people want. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'm moved.
Okay. Katina, Mark made the motion to transfer $141,726. It was seconded by Katina. Is there any, are there any questions on this?
Yeah.
Mark?
Yeah, Neil, you had said that a kindergarten class was created, but I'm looking here, it looks like we've added one, two, three, four teaching positions as well as aides. That, am I accurate?
So there's a creation of, so there's the position elimination of the admin salary and then the increase of teachers are different account amounts because some of those smaller amounts, for example, aren't entire positions. It's just how they're funded through different sources, like for example, one of the amounts is $3,744, which is in a whole teacher, obviously. So the total amount there gets us to the position changes for a teacher and a para.
So some of that money may be now coming out of grants, is what you're telling me, or some other?
Correct. It's just, yeah, it's just different speci, it's different specific lines. I would call it really like kind of a bookkeeping move, just transferring from the admin reduction to those two other positions.
Yep, that's exactly what it is.
What? Yeah.
What, I can't hear you. I'm sad.
Oh.
So in speaking to Chaney on this morning as well, some of those were in the red and she's transferring part of the salary of the administrator into those accounts that were in the red. Thank you.
So are we eliminating administrator position? Because that's, one is $72,000 and one is $69,000.
One position is being eliminated, that is correct.
This is one of those situations that we anticipated being able to save some money through attrition. However, as you can see, the funds are now being utilized for something that is needed. So we're continuing to be responsive to the needs of the community by adding that kindergarten class and also by paying for the salary of the paraprofessional.
So would that change be reflected in the overall numbers the Board has been looking at as far as where we are with the budget, you know, positions being cut and things like that? Yeah, because we've been given information, X amount of positions have been impacted, X amounts of positions have been not filled. Is that, is what's happening on this sheet impacting that?
So we will update the number of positions that have been either eliminated or were freezing due to the current budget situation, but as you can see, we didn't really have any savings because we're utilizing the funds to fund for the kindergarten and the paraprofessional position. So it's not like we have additional funds. But yes, we will update our numbers so that individuals and the community understand where money is going.
Yeah, I think we need to update what we've been, what we've shared with folks at the, you know, at the beginning of the summer versus where we are now. Not, I mean, it's great that we have to add a class if we have more kindergarten kids. That's great, but it does mean that we have to shift things around. And I have a question about why we need to do the transfer tonight when we haven't had a chance to talk about it like before tonight?
Because the kindergarten position is being, we're trying to hire someone quickly and we want to make sure we could pay the person and the para position as quickly as possible, as soon as they start.
Okay. It's not ideal, you know, like when we had our forensic audit and we talked about, you know, making transfers and things of that sort, we wanted to make sure we had as much opportunity to discuss it properly at a finance and audit committee meeting. And I think, you know, in the future, if we're asked to do this, maybe a, an explanation to the Board ahead of the meeting so we know why we're doing it tonight would be helpful.
Thank you.
I'm not just looking at you. And I know our, our finance office has been, you know, it's been in transition. I'm not upset with anybody, I'm just noting that this is not ideally the way we like to do business on these matters.
And normally we would have waited for the committee, but due to the timeliness of that position and trying to get it up. And also, the addition of the position wasn't something we anticipated even a month ago but due to the increased enrollment. But thank you.
I understand.
I appreciate your point.
It's just that I think it would be helpful, that's all. You know, just like a paragraph explanation along with the sheet with the numbers would be helpful for us to know why we needed to do this tonight. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded and Lynn has been talking about it a lot, I'm sorry, but I wanted to get clarity. Anybody else have any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay, go to it at Natchog. And with that, we're on to public comment. Is there anybody who would like to speak during public comment? Seeing or hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn at 7:38.
I move, we move.
Meeting adjourned at 7:38. Thank you, everybody. See you later, folks online.